Hey, good evening. Let's open up our policy workshop. As you'll see, we have quite a few new library policies. These are all mandated policies, so not really up for discussion or revision. We have first though, again however mandated, is our individual education program, special education program policy, which at one point is the one that was together and it is now mandated to be separated into two policies along with a regulation. Just so everybody's kind of on the same page. Again, not up for any revision, is what it is. Any questions on policy 6159?
No.
So then we have discussion on the revision of policy 5114, suspension expulsion due process. Again, I believe this was a mandate in changing how this duration for certain grade levels. I believe there were probably were other changes. If anyone have any questions? But again, mandated.
Mandated.
No? Okay. So we have discussion in the annual review of policy 6172.4, which is Title I, parental and family engagement policy, Title I.
No changes on this, just a review?
Yep. Annual. Yep. And we have now our discussion and first reading of policy 6171, special education. So this is a new separated policy. Again, mandated, so not much to really... Did you make any tweaks that were...
Michelle, my only... can I just... my only part with this one is ensure that the language around developmental delay now reflects to age nine rather than age five, which it previously was. The definition changed.
No, we didn't change it.
We didn't change it.
And we now have also the three new library policies, which we'll also tie into later this evening with the positions we are hopefully going to add to our operating budget. So we have first policy 6161.12, library material review and reconsideration. Any questions? Comments? It really is. It's just, I think what we've already in a way been doing, but it's just going to be a more, I want to say standardized protocol and procedure.
Can I call out one thing in the review considerations? Just to bring your attention to the committee that now needs to be formed. So it really formalizes a process. And it's a pretty expansive committee under... and this is all required in the public act. So there's a designee from the superintendent, the principal or their designee, the director of curriculum, so someone tied with office of curriculum instruction. You've got a representative from the board of education. You have a teacher familiar with the content in the grade level. And then you've got family guardian representation as well as a certified school librarian for any sort of reconsideration request that comes through.
There has to be a parent from the two different grade levels, correct?
Yeah, there's one for a student age 13 or younger and then 14 or older. So it's a robust process, but that is something that is definitely a shift. And then any material under consideration stays accessible throughout the process.
Is that the one where we're also going to be looking... well, it goes with it. We don't have to approve it, but the regulation? Is that the library regulation?
It works in tandem. So that next policy, the collection, development and maintenance, that puts in place that the superintendent establishes a regulation. And we do have some sample language around that, but if this were to move forward, that would be kind of the next phase, working with our library staff to get their input on it. The one thing that it does call out, because you don't have the regulation language, is that it basically sets the standard that we review material against. So we're looking at like their physical condition, demand, availability, and then also is there something more recent or more age appropriate that handles the same content?
Mm-hmm.
And then that needs to be inventoried and updated. So there's quite a bit more...
To be done.
...on the plate of those who are helping to maintain our libraries in our schools.
So then yes, 6161.13 is collection, development and maintenance. And then we have discussion and also the first reading of policy 6161.14, library display and program. Does anyone have any questions on any of these? No? No? But you might get an indication on why we might need our library aids back to carry out many of these required procedures. Gosh, we flew right through that. No questions, comments on any of these? No? They are. They really, really are. Anyone who want to give any input? No? All right then. That concludes our policy review workshop.
Good evening, I'd like to call to order the meeting with the flag. Flag allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, good evening, could we have a roll call attendance please?
Yes you may.
For the last time.
For the last time. Mr. Palmer.
Here.
Ms. Delongo. Mr. Hennessy.
Here.
Ms. Johnson.
Here.
Ms. Putney.
Here.
Ms. Santiago.
Here.
Mr. Stacy.
Here.
Ms. Terrello.
Here.
Dr. DeLucia.
Here.
Okay, so this evening, as you know, we wished Erica farewell and a big hello to Adam. But also, what I've had Sarah drop off in front of you is last year's goals. We do need to start working on those, so I just wanted to make sure everyone had actually physical copy in front of them. I know everyone always talks about making change, here's your chance. This is the time, help make some revisions. Without that, nothing's going to change. So, for the next meeting, I'm hoping that we will be able to vote on some new goals. At least discuss whatever revisions anyone would like to put forward. Because our interim superintendent, of course, cannot present his goals until we present ours. And let's make sure we all keep in mind there is a difference between goals and objectives. Okay, alright. So that's just for you to look at, again, next meeting. And that's all I have, do we have correspondence?
No.
Okay. Standing committee reports.
We are meeting to discuss the, I guess, approval of the contract, teacher's contract.
Wonderful, okay. Jack.
Two things, first of all, you'll find a list of all of our fall coaches in your packet. The athletic department did a great job in providing us with some high-quality coaches for this year. But, more importantly, I want to just take a second to tell you about, I attended the ring ceremony for the hockey team, the co-op hockey team. And the outstanding work that Rob did putting together the film, which was excellent, except for the one part, Rob, where you showed the semifinal where East Haven beat North Haven, but I'll let that one go. But, if you were watching it, you'd think you were watching something, you know, by ESPN. So if I can join me in a round of applause for the work of Rob.
Excellent. Alright, and as you know, for policy, we have quite a few new policies to approve tonight, of course, all mandated, not really kind of a discussion thing. And that is it for policy. Superintendent's report.
Yeah, so, convocation on Monday was absolutely spectacular. It was so great to see and welcome all the faculty and staff back. It was laid out so that I started it, Michelle and the mayor spoke, and we did some introductions of some new staff, Lisa Vilius assisted with that, recognized some teachers who had achieved tenure at the end of last year. And then, I got to address the faculty and staff for the last time and officially handed the mic over to Adam, who set the stage and the tone for moving forward. And so it was a great convocation in wrapping things up and then transitioning into the future. And it set the stage for what I think is going to be an amazing year.
Yeah, I agree.
Yeah.
Definitely.
It was great, there was a great energy, great vibe, really fantastic. And today, we welcomed our students back. And it was incredible to see their smiling faces. All of the classrooms looked so incredible, our teachers did an outstanding job setting up their classrooms, and I'd just like to thank some of the key departments and people who really worked hard behind the scenes to create a smooth, efficient, and really successful opening, a lot goes into it. RJ and the maintenance and the custodian crew for all the work that they did inside the schools, outside of the schools, the furniture that they moved, all of the responses they made to all of the requests all summer long, while working with a pretty thin crew, given, you know, the fact that we didn't have a lot of helpers this summer, there just weren't a lot of people interested in working. So, their extensive efforts are beyond appreciated and instrumental to making the opening very smooth. Our school secretaries and nurses, the magnitude of registrations that we had this summer were incredible. I think the middle school had forty new eighth grade registrations alone. And, so when you think about that, that's nurses and physicals, that's registration paperwork, it's residency documentation, it's getting data in the system so that they can get scheduled on time. A lot goes into all of those student transitions in and out of the district every summer. Also, our building principals, and the work that they put in in organizing their schedules and setting their goals, getting their staff professional learning situated and put together for the start of the school year. The amount of administrative tasks that go in, into play for the preparation of both the return of staff and the return of students is immense, and they worked tirelessly, but they did an amazing job. Also, our transportation company, I think RJ only received one phone call today. And so while we did have a few buses, you know, go by bus stops, those things are easily rectified, and so we'll put some fixes on those, but fantastic job just putting the routes together, getting it published, and out to families in a timely manner. And then, of course, our faculty and staff, our teachers, our paraprofessionals, all our support staff, they looked amazing today, they were happy, excited, and welcomed kids with big smiles and lots of positive energy. and welcomed kids with big smiles and lots of positive energy. Overall, I think it was probably one of the best openings we've had just from the sense of pride, the positivity, and the overall vibe that was felt, that you truly feel on the first day. So it was really great, and I think it's going to kick off again what I believe to be an amazing school year.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Mr. Superintendent reports.
Yeah, so Lisa and I have just a short presentation this evening. We wanted to loop back to share some of the work that went into the summer literacy enrichment program. We took a pause the previous summer, engaged in some competitive grant funding, and reimagined the programming. And I definitely want to highlight the efforts of the staff that worked that program. And this was a complement to the extended school year happening in other sites. So this is the program that run through Tuttle. So one of the things that we keep in mind is this concept of summer slide. So thinking about the loss of academic skills. There's a lot of different research that attempts to map this out. And a lot of the data points to that even under great conditions, we can see as much as like one to two months of regression from the gains that are made during school year. And so summer after summer, when that is compounded, that creates significant opportunity gaps for the students within our district. So in regards to legislation that directs that we support students who have yet to demonstrate grade-level proficiency in grades K through three, and in combination with efforts with our summer mental health supports, we were able to reimagine this program. Our participation by the end of it, in K through three, we had 94 students participate. In grades four through five, we had 18. And in both of these groups, this was 36% of the outreach that we did. So we opened it up in grades K through three, any student that was yet to demonstrate that end-of-year grade-level proficiency as readers, to continue supporting their growth. The grades four through five, we were actually able to secure some additional funding to be able to open it up. And then highlighted here, Nicole Casella did an amazing job as program coordinator this summer. And I wanted to highlight our instructional staff. We were able to maintain about a 1 to 15 ratio in all the classes, as well as bring in additional intervention, multilingual supports, and incorporate mindful movement with physical education as well during the day. I also wanted to highlight that we had two ML teachers because simultaneously, because we had this up and running, we were able to secure even further Title III funding that allowed us to support our recently arrived multilingual learners and do support all the way up to through middle school as part of the program. So we were really excited with that 36% participation rate. Families have busy summers. There's all sorts of education that happens outside of the school during summer. But we were excited to be able to offer this across five weeks in July. The instructional day was three and a half hours, incorporated brunch, breakfast and lunch for everyone, and again, that mindful movement. And then we were really intentional in developing this curriculum with the instructors in the program. And so they incorporated daily morning meetings, interactive read-alouds. There was small group literacy rotations at the heart of this. But we integrated math through project-based learning as well. And that was an experience we wanted for students to have this, really feel like an enrichment opportunity. We based those small group literacy rotations within our East Haven literacy model. I presented on this last year, our work with the Hillford Literacy in tandem. And I wanted to highlight specifically that component around tiered instruction. So this, again, is that stair step that we support students along to become proficient, fluent readers who enjoy reading. And then it becomes a part of their fulfilling life as literate adults. And so we had a number of students working with correct letter sounds, being able to recode nonsense words correctly, to work on their fluency and their accuracy. And what we did is we carried their, the programming through from the year. So whatever their instructional focus was after end-of-year testing, we continued to progress, monitor them using our same DIBELS program. So it was a nice continuation of what they experienced to create that bridge into this year. And really importantly, we wanted to report back on impact. So 22% of participants, and this is looking at K through five, were able to avoid the summer slide. We were able to sustain them at their current levels, or they demonstrated maybe minimal growth. But what was really fantastic is through the intentional work of our educators and in partnership with our families, we saw that 38% of these students were able to demonstrate a pattern of growth. Maybe they took an initial dip after a month off of school and were able to have a spike in growth that surpassed their end-of-year performance. And another 19 across both progress monitoring points and their instructional focus met benchmark proficiency. That's really substantial. And we wanted to call this out because that does not just happen during summer. That is really intentional work, and I think that we have built a program that has the opportunity to be sustained moving forward. As we head into the school year, we are building groups inside of our Panorama Student Success data platform so that we can continue to monitor how these students do as they move into the next grade level, both from a literacy standpoint, but also looking at the math fluency that we embedded, as well as their social-emotional well-being. Because we monitor that as well through the Panorama staff survey, or student survey. So really excited, and I know you all were curious to see how the program played out. And I think we've got something to build upon in the years to come.
Great.
And then Lisa's going to present.
Thank you. Yeah, do you want to switch, or do you want to do the slides?
I can do it. It's fine.
All right. So I'm going to talk a little bit about professional learning. So you'll see the same kind of pattern of coherence that we're trying to maintain from one year to the next with our professional learning model. So the first thing I want to look at is just the pillars of our approach, which we talked about last year. Really focusing on depth over breadth. We listened to the feedback that we received last year from our teachers, from our professional development and evaluation committee members. We reviewed the input of our administrative team during June retreat. We looked at different ways that we could continue to honor some of the work that was going on last year that teachers said they wanted to be a part of and didn't have a chance to participate in, as well as bringing in some new ideas for professional learning, some new topics that really were going to connect to practical application in the classroom, give teachers choice and opportunity to collaborate with new peers. So we really wanted to focus on making sure that we're providing a level playing field that teachers need to be successful in the classroom, but also get to that next level of work. So where we landed with our pathways for this year were a mix of recurring pathways that we offered last year or added on to, and some new ideas. So we've had a focus last year and this year on creating some teacher leadership to support new curriculum implementation, and that's taken a number of formats. One pathway we're offering is an Empowering Teacher Leaders pathway, where we have, we have a university professor that's coming in to meet with these individuals. They're working on action research projects that are going to be carried out in their classrooms, in their buildings. So they work on those programs over the course of their three pathway days. They consult with the administrators or teachers in their buildings, depending on what their project is. But trying to facilitate some of that teacher leadership and foster that. We're introducing new social studies curriculum, an inquiry model at K-5. We also had some sixth-grade teachers that took part in inquiry. What was the title of it? I'm losing my... Inquiry Advocate, right? They're inquiry advocates. So we wanted teachers in some of the buildings to kind of be that go-to person that can answer some questions, that can be the teacher leader, that can be the one that consults, or can be a liaison between our office and the teachers in the building as they engage in this initial implementation. We brought back the six-plus-one traits of writing Level 1 pathway, which teachers really talked about so widely last year that we had a whole new crew of teachers that wanted to participate in that. But we also had teachers in the pathway that Adam and I facilitated last year that wanted the next level of work, like they wanted more on feedback and conferring. And so we are facilitating Level 2 this year. So we had, we had a number of our cohort, quite a few actually, that were back with us again this year to do some more work on writing. We have a book study group who is reading The Anxious Generation with a real action mindset, looking at policy and practice and different things that we can do relative to some of our technology and cellphone policies. They invite anyone on the board that might be interested in reading the book to participate with them, to come to those sessions. They really are interested in sharing the things that they're feeling about what they see in school and where that lines up against policy. We have several administrators that are participating in that with them so that we can really be thinking about how this might inform action or family engagement around cellphone use in schools and what the impact of that might be. We had Mr. Swan doing a pathway with, with a brand-new team of special education teachers, supporting them in effective case management as they transition to the district. It's a real shortage area. It's been a high turnover area. And we have two pathways running for our special education teachers this year on really just getting the support that they need to effectively manage their caseloads and improve their own professional knowledge and abilities so that they can feel really successful in their work. I could go on and on. We've, we really, we have these ongoing connections to supporting our multilingual learners and providing engaging instruction for them. We had a significant number of paraeducators who participated last Friday. They are welcome and being provided training opportunities at each of the three district days. And in March will be a required day for all of our paraeducators, where they will come and engage for the full day in professional learning opportunities designed specifically for them. So just again, to highlight who some of the facilitators are that are working with our team. Internal leadership, so Mr. Swan is facilitating a group. The instructional leaders are all leading a pathway. Darcy Doian jumped in and facilitated a session for our special education teachers in one of the pathways on unwrapping standards and really understanding how that work with standards can help inform IEP development and implementation in the classroom. We have, we have some principals that are serving as liaisons, providing us feedback and kind of learning alongside teachers. We have teacher leaders that are running some groups. And we have some external partners who have really become kind of part of our team. We have a core group from ACES that were with us last year, who are back and have been really well-received by the teachers. Our curriculum partners at Enquire Ed and Amplify provided sessions. And also our Panorama partner. And all of them, I think the really wonderful thing is that they have all been willing to engage in conversation before planning these sessions about what we're looking for, what teachers need, what kinds of sessions we're asking for them to develop. And I think that's been a big reason that the response has been so positive from teachers. We also had two university professors that were with us. So we have Dr. Wesley Henry from Sacred Heart, who was with our Empowering Teacher Leaders group last year, and he's back again this year. And Dr. Anastasia Sorakina, who is a new TESOL professor at Southern, who came in and had a wonderful session with some of our teachers on working with our multilingual learners. So I'll go through these slides quickly, but there were two through-lines that we're really looking to make sure have a presence in all of the pathways this year. One is responsible use of AI. One to kind of help manage some of the data. AI can really help teachers to draw a lot of summary information quickly. It can be used to enhance engagement, to provide even like mini tutoring opportunities for students when, when teachers are engaged with another student. It can be really used to support answering questions that students might have while they're working independently. Personalization and choice, and increased efficiency for teachers. There are some things that AI can just do very quickly that can allow the teacher to really focus on instruction. So we're, we're trying to vet some of these tools and make sure that in each pathway, we are highlighting things that we know are high-quality, that are going to help teachers in a positive way and not supplant the work that, that we really need to be focusing on from a human level.
Is there a specific platform that the district is using for AI?
So we're using, we're asking them to really focus on using Gemini versus ChatGPT because we are a Google School. And so anything that they're, they're doing through Gemini is covered under our data privacy agreements. So that's really been the focus. We do subscribe to two other DIFIT and one other tool that have also been vetted. And they're really largely centered on instructional resources. So they're not things we're directing students to. They're more things we're directing teachers to, to support lesson development, or small group instruction, or designing of activities that can be used rather than them starting from scratch and spending a lot of time on creation of materials. And supporting our exceptional learners. Really trying to build collective efficacy around the support for our exceptional learners, whether it's our MLs, our special education students. More of a feeling of everyone being in it together and that mindset of increasing our impact and building our data literacy, really understanding who the learner is that's in front of you today. Not, not last year at the end of the year, but really looking at a wide variety of data points and getting to know the students so that we can really provide the best possible instruction in the classroom. This is just a sample of some of the early feedback and responses. That's not a made-up number. We had one like neutral response that I didn't feel I could count as positive. But 99% of the responses from teachers were positive. That learning was centered on authentic application, that engaged them in meaningful opportunities to learn and collaborate. I love that people were reporting increased confidence because that's half the battle. You do something once and you're like, yeah, but I don't really feel comfortable enough to go and try it in my classroom. So that idea of depth and them having multiple exposures to things. Some of the teachers that are working on writing, this was their fourth session working with this writing framework. So I think that that really will speak to application to the classroom. And concrete, specific notes and recommendations. Normally, you look at the feedback and it's like, yeah, thanks, that was great. You know, like you don't get a lot of very specific feedback. And I actually counted, there were 26 specific data points or recommendations, like requests for particular content. Can you tell our presenter, we really want to do that activity with reading standards next time? Or requests for, can you post these resources here so that we can access them after the fact? So those kinds of specific requests, I think, really speak to the level of engagement that people are bringing to the table. So really exciting for us.
Could we rule this out for the entire year? Was it, I can't remember.
Yes, so they'll engage in these pathways again on November 4th for Election Day, and then in March.
But we've gone through a whole year cycle, though, with it.
Yep.
Okay, perfect. Good. I'm glad that it was so positive. I mean, it's wonderful. Thank you so much.
You're welcome. And next steps are to bring this, to build the repository on the new website. So that's, like, our goal is to have everything up there.
Yeah, when you go in the staff login, you'll be able to access. So if you ran a different pathway, you can click into any and see the resources and materials. Because that was a big piece of feedback last year that staff... Because that was a big piece of feedback last year that staff wanted to access everything, which again, I think speaks to the level of engagement and the commitment of our educators.
That's it, right?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you guys. Appreciate it.
Okay.
Appreciate it.
That brings us to our COFO report.
RJ? RJ?
Any news?
We have FOFOs over 7,000, which is a little lengthy, but not, you know, out of the wrong for the time of the year. We had to set up multiple years of length of FOFOs. And there's invoices that cover two fiscal years as we're still closing out 24, 25. So you're seeing a small batch there. And there was a, because we didn't have a meeting, you're seeing a couple batches of 25, 26. Your pages will start and stop a couple times, but that's just a gap of meeting times. But any questions related to any of them, I can field now. That's all I got. No questions, that's all I got.
I have a question or just the sidewalk. I, I know I kind of mentioned it to you before. I, it's not necessarily part of this, but the sidewalk down by the gym, I mean, not the gym, I'm sorry, the cafeteria where they come in and out for wrestling, not the sidewalk, the stairs. I just have some concerns over the stairs. I don't know, like I had mentioned, not in the meeting, I don't know if we were able to get it fixed, get prepared over the summer.
So we're still trying to, projects like that go through capital funding. So once we get that finalized, we can address that in the early fall. We should be meeting within the next couple of weeks to finalize where those allocations will be. But yes, it's on, there are many sidewalks that need to be addressed district-wide, but that is on the list. You're talking about the ones right here, correct?
Yeah, the one, yeah, where the, because the kids at night, like, I know it's not wrestling season yet, but I just happened to notice it last year, and I'm sure there's teachers that come in and out that way. And I just don't want anyone to have an accident.
Gotcha.
Well, if we're gonna go down that road, I brought the subject forward. What about the, the lines in this parking lot? You can't distinguish one spot from another.
We can, we can paint lines. They are a little bit pricey, but yes, we, we could, we can do that.
Is there, is there a plan or?
No, we can, we've, we've painted in other, I think the plan will be to break off the lot in different areas and do them one at a time until we can tackle them all. But yes, we can add that to the list.
You know, just question, like the handicap, you know, where there's supposed to be the line so that if no parking within the handicap, but you can't tell that, you know, so a van could have moved or whatever like that.
Yep, we can do that.
All right, thank you.
Maybe those priority?
Yeah. Some of them we can paint in-house, like the handicap spaces, as long as we use the right paint, which we've done in other schools. So we can address those first and then handle the long-term stuff later.
All right. Thank you.
Yeah.
Any other questions? Shall we move on to acceptance of meeting minutes from July 22nd, 2025? Are there any revisions, projections? Barring none, we will accept the minutes. This brings us to our audience of citizens portion of this evening. Is there anyone here who would like to speak?
Major Barker, 57-foot road. Tonight was presented about the summer literacy program. I was lucky enough to have both of my nieces in that program this summer. And I could tell you firsthand the difference between the end of school year and the end of summer reading, because things that neither child could read at the beginning of that program, they were able to read to me at the end of the program. And they were way more excited about the beginning of the school year since they went to school most of the summer.
Thank you.
That's great.
Any other speakers?
I'm looking at the smile. Validation, right? Oh, that's.
Okay, if now we're gonna move in to our executive session portion of this evening to discuss our East Haven Educator Association contract negotiations.
I move that we move to executive session.
Oh, we don't gotta, because it's on there. We're in there, because you can't move to come out, because you can't vote in executive session.
Okay, there you go. You've said that before and not just keep.
So no motion or second?
No motion.
Okay.
That's only if it's added.
Yep.
So.
Oh, I see what you're saying. It's already in.
It's already in the agenda.
Well, welcome back. We're gonna go start right in with new business at 7.1. Discussion on possible action on the revision of policy 6159, Individualized Education Program, Special Education Program, IEP. As we discussed in Policy Workshop, we have now separated the two, right?
Mm-hmm.
Want to make sure that I'm keeping it correct. Adam?
6159 will be...
Just individualized education, correct?
Individual Education Program, IEP. The Special Education Program goes away.
Yes. Okay. So, I'm just gonna say it. If anyone doesn't have any questions, the motion would be to... Oh, no. Because it's just discussion to revise. We don't have to act on this one, right? We're gonna act later? Or no, do we need to re...
No, this is a revision. This is not the new one.
Okay. So, we're gonna revise policy 6159 to be titled Individualized Education Program, IEP. Does that sound right?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Yes, I did. Just to make it easier. Okay. Any questions or comments?
Tia, you second that, okay.
Roll call vote, please.
Ms. DePalma?
Yes.
Mr. Hennessy?
Yes.
Ms. Johnson?
Yes.
Ms. Putney?
Yes.
Ms. Santiago?
Yes.
Mr. Stacy?
Yes.
Ms. Terello?
Yes.
Dr. Delucia?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Okay. 7.2, Discussion on Possible Action on the Revision of Policy 5114, Suspension, Expulsion, Due Process. As we discussed during our workshop, these were mandated changes. Any questions or comments that are clarifying? Otherwise, I'll ask for a motion.
I will make a motion to approve the revision of policy 5114, Suspension, Expulsion, Due Process.
Great. Any other questions or comments? If not, roll call vote.
Ms. DePalma?
Yes.
Mr. Hennessy?
Yes.
Ms. Johnson?
Yes.
Ms. Putney?
Yes.
Ms. Santiago?
Yes.
Mr. Stacy?
Yes.
Ms. Terello?
Yes.
Dr. Delucia?
Yes.
Motion carries.
So, we have 7.3, Discussion on Possible Action on the Review of Policy 6172.4, Title I, Parental and Family Engagement Policy. I don't believe action needs to be taken. This is just up for review?
Mm-hmm.
Has everyone reviewed?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Just checking. Any questions or comments? All right. Then we will move to 7.2.
We do need a motion that it was reviewed, so we can put a review date on it.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
All right. So, it's not approving, it's just motion of review?
I have a motion...
To review.
To review. To mark reviewed. Policy 6172.4, Title I, Parental and Family Engagement Policy.
Second.
Okay. Ms. DePalma?
Yes.
Mr. Hennessy?
Yes.
Ms. Johnson?
Yes.
Ms. Putney?
Yes.
Ms. Santiago?
Yes.
Mr. Stacy?
Yes.
Ms. Terello?
Yes.
Dr. Delucia?
Yes.
Motion carries.
7.4, this is Discussion on Possible Action to Waive the Second Reading of New Policy 6171, Special Education. So, that would be the motion to waive the second reading.
Not moving.
Mm-hmm.
Motion to waive the second reading of the new policy, 6171, Special Education.
Second.
Okay. Great. And again, this is just separating the previous policy.
Yeah. Ms. DePalma?
Yes.
Mr. Hennessy?
Yes.
Ms. Johnson?
Yes.
Ms. Putney?
Yes.
Ms. Santiago?
Yes.
Mr. Stacy?
Yes.
Ms. Terello?
Yes.
Dr. Delucia?
Yes.
Motion carries.
So, then we have 7.5. This is Discussion on Possible Action to Adopt New Policy 6171, Special Education.
I'll make a motion to adopt the policy.
New Policy 6171, Special Education.
Second.
No questions or comments? Roll call.
Ms. DePalma?
Yes.
Mr. Hennessy? Ms. Johnson?
Yes.
Ms. Putney?
Yes.
Ms. Santiago?
Yes.
Mr. Stacy?
Yes.
Ms. Terello?
Yes.
Dr. Delucia?
Yes.
Motion carries.
7.6. So, this would be Discussion on Possible Action to Waive the Second Reading of the Following New Policies. Policy 6161.12, Library Material Review and Reconsideration. Policy 6161.13, Collection Development and Maintenance. And Policy 6161.14, Library Display and Program. These are the new policies that we are, we need to adopt, that were discussed in the workshop. So, this would be a...
Motion to waive the second reading of the following new policies. Policy 6161.12, Library Material Review and Reconsideration. Policy 6161.13, Collection Development and Maintenance. Policy 6161.14, Library Display and Program. Second.
Roll call. Ms. DePalma?
Yes.
Mr. Hennessy?
Yes.
Ms. Johnson?
Yes.
Ms. Putney?
Yes.
Ms. Santiago?
Yes.
Mr. Stacy?
Yes.
Ms. Terello?
Yes.
Dr. Delucia?
Yes.
Motion carries.
So, now we have Discussion, 7.7, Discussion on Possible Action to Adopt the Following New Policies. Policy 6161.12, Library Material Review and Reconsideration. Policy 6161.13, Collection Development and Maintenance. And Policy 6161.14, Library Display and Program. So, this would be, if there's no clarifiers, and hopefully a motion to adopt those policies.
I will make a motion to adopt those policies.
Okay. Again, to adopt all new library policies. Okay. Any questions or comments on the new policies? All right. Roll call.
Who second that? I'm sorry.
I'll second.
Oh, Tia. Thank you. Ms. DePalma?
Yes.
Mr. Hennessy?
Yes.
Ms. Johnson?
Yes.
Ms. Putney?
Yes.
Ms. Santiago?
Yes.
Mr. Stacy?
Yes.
Ms. Terello?
Yes.
And Dr. Delucia?
Yes.
Motion carries.
So, now, this brings us to 7.8, the Discussion on Possible Action and the Approval of Three Library Aid Positions to the Operating Budget. I will clarify that these are new positions. Adam, I worked on the new job descriptions to be more, I think, cohesive with the new policies that we just adopted. So, there are going to be, I think, further duties and responsibilities, as well as expectations for these positions. Is the new job description in the packet?
No, typically, we wouldn't look at the job description, but I did want to call out two components. One would be the makeup of the committees. If there is a request for a review of materials, it's a pretty significant lift. So, one of the components embedded would be the, may serve as like a principal designee on the review committee for any materials that might be requested under review for invested parties. And then also, something that we have seen be really positive throughout the district is promoting literacy efforts and independent reading within our schools. And so, ensuring that that is something that would be a component of the job description as well. it's a pretty significant lift. So, one of the components embedded would be the MACER as like a principal designee on the review committee for any materials that might be requested under review for invested parties. And then also something that we have seen be really positive throughout the district is promoting literacy efforts and independent reading within our schools. And so, ensuring that that is something that would be a component of the job description as well. The other thing I would point out is that there is the need for regulation in regards to how we develop and maintain our collections, which is a much more involved inventorying process that has a number of components and will be a substantial lift. Decisions were made in spring based on the available information that we had, and this is policy that was approved at the state level since that time. And so, we needed to come back and do a reconsideration. So, yeah.
I... No, we cut those positions because we...
Then we get a motion just before we do that?
Yeah, I'm sorry. I'll make a motion to approve three library aid positions to the operating budget.
Second.
Great.
So, I know we removed... I don't remember how many we eliminated before.
Four.
And it's four?
Yes.
So, this...
Was it five?
Five. So this job is a little bit different, as you've said, it has new responsibilities. I'm just wondering where the funding's coming from for this because there was... that's really, I think, the reason that we eliminated them to begin with. And that's my first question. And my second question is, would we... Would there be preference to the people who were laid off before? Are they... Is it the same job family? Like, is it a re... I'm just curious how...
With the new job description, they would have to reapply to the new posting, correct?
Correct. But out of an understanding and commitment, we would make sure and encourage first those who may wish to return to a similar position, to be able to have that opportunity, to go through the process.
Okay, good. Thank you.
But just that they all know that there's gonna be new expectations and responsibilities.
Correct.
Yeah, we will reach out to all...
Yes.
Good, thank you.
And the interview process will be such where we will gain information and insight as to whether they meet the qualifications of the new job description.
Which is fine. I just wanna make sure we are reaching out to them.
Of course. No, it's the respectful thing to do, 100%.
I think for the funding, you kinda have to get... Almost talk about the... How we're gonna... About the next agenda item too, and the change up, right?
I think we can talk about them separately.
Well, it's part of the money, right? Because we're going from, what is it, 12 to 9? Or is it 11 to 9 with the secretary? So we're saving there.
10.
Athletic secretary.
10 to 9.
10 to 9. So we're saving by dropping it a month?
I think RJ might be able to help get an understanding of that.
I can start, and then RJ, if you wanna like pick up from that. So, when we take a look at like my current position, the Office of Curriculum Instruction, I set forth quite a few components that would be essential as part of that transition and carryover. Lisa and I've done a really thorough review, and we have things in a really strong place. I've been taking on increasingly more roles in alignment with the interim superintendent role, while still being able to maintain a really close tether to curriculum instruction. So, working directly with teacher teams. And so, I think we have the opportunity to continue building on, building up our teacher leader capacity and the desire of our educators in the district to be able to contribute to curriculum work, where it would not be administrative tasks, but some of the like curriculum maintenance and ATLAS would be appropriate. So I think that we can realize some savings by taking a look at holding off on putting in like an interim assistant superintendent into my role in September.
Okay.
Yeah.
Thank you. I think that sounds great. Good use of the saving.
And our educators are asking... I put forward a challenge during convocation of like, I wanted to hear where they see opportunities where we can work together and next steps. And one theme that was emerging was more representation in some of this work. So the opportunity, again, to receive training in curriculum writing and to be a part of it. That really builds, I think, connection to the work and commitment to the district.
Thank you.
Yeah. And then, did you wanna...
Yeah, sure. So the exact numbers for that scenario, just so everybody knows, the swapping of super and assistant super and the transition time equated to savings of roughly $135,000. I'll speak in generalization for both items. Adding the positions tonight add back 83... Roughly $83,000. And that still leaves us about $50,000 to have to apply back to the budget. So, the positions in front of you tonight are funded through that scenario, with some left for other absorption if we need to in other places.
And the union is all good with this, right? Yep, everybody's on board. Just make sure everybody knows, everybody's happy about it. We're not surprising anyone.
Correct.
And I know I talked with Jen, even though she's not here tonight, and she's kind of excited about this strategy as well.
The athletic secretary position, I'm sorry.
Well, that's... Yeah, I know, Jen. We're getting ahead of ourselves.
So we have Ms. Terrello with a motion, Ms. Santiago with a second to approve the three library aid positions.
So now we can vote?
Yeah. Vote, okay. Ms. DePalma.
Yes.
Mr. Hennessy.
No.
Ms. Johnson.
Yes.
Ms. Putney.
Obstain.
Ms. Santiago.
Yes.
Mr. Stacy.
Yes.
Ms. Terrello.
Yes.
Dr. Delucia.
Yes.
Motion carries.
7.9, So this would be Discussion on Possible Action on the Approval of One New Secretary, Nine Athletic Position. So this would be a change from the current position, where we had someone retire, and we're kinda just, I think, recalculating some things. But I will ask if anyone does not have any clarifiers for a motion.
I just... And I just wanna clarify, this is not really... It says one new secretary position, but it's not really...
Because it's nine, it's moving a difference.
It's a replacement, but just reconfigured in a different way.
The board voted on a budget that does not currently include this position.
Oh, okay, so...
So your current operating budget does not include this position. So it is new, and it is a different grade.
Okay, thank you for the clarifier.
Sure. So we didn't have the old athletic position in the go... Because we knew the retiree before, right? Yeah, okay.
That's why.
So it does... That's why it's new, because it doesn't really exist.
I will make a motion to approve one new secretary, nine athletic positions.
Second.
Any other questions or comments? Such as maybe salary?
In accordance with the secretary's contract for grade nine, step one.
Okay, yeah, no. Just wanna make sure that's clear.
Yeah, this is... I mean, it...
It's contractual, right?
It's contractual, but it's a grade nine rather than where it was previous.
It was a grade 10 prior.
Yeah.
Which reduces hours per day, as well as the number of days you work within the year. So...
And salary.
Which reduces the salary based on that.
Right.
So this position, can you just give us some background on exactly what this person does to support athletics? Just so, I mean, we understand why it's necessary.
So, in regards to athletics, this individual helps with, you know, maintaining the buses, getting coach packets, gets involved in the hiring process, you know, in regards to getting new coaches in. There are reports that you have to do to the CIAC. You have to check and make sure that all the students who are involved in the sports maintain their grade point average to be able to participate in games, as well as, you know, monitor absences. So there's a lot of tasks that go along with that during the school year.
Medical records.
In addition to POs and answering the phone and responding to students and parents.
This is for the entire district?
Yes.
The entire district?
Both middle school and high school.
Right. And if we don't have this position, then it's pretty much up to like Anthony to do what he does and...
The secretary position, yeah.
I mean, yeah, I just wanna be clear on that, yeah.
And some of it would probably end up maybe even falling on the other secretaries, which is not fair.
All right, thank you. I appreciate it.
So we have a motion from Ms. Santiago and a second from Ms. Johnson.
Okay, roll call.
Ms. DePalma.
Yes.
Mr. Hennessy.
No.
Ms. Johnson.
Yes.
Ms. Putney.
Yes.
Ms. Santiago.
Yes.
Mr. Stacy.
Yes.
Ms. Terrello.
Yes.
Dr. Delucia.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Okay, so now brings us to 7.11, Discussion on Possible Action on the Approval of the East Haven Educator Association Contract.
I will make a motion to approve the East Haven Educator Association Contract.
Second.
All right, any questions or comments? All right, roll call vote.
Ms. DePalma.
Yes.
Mr. Hennessy.
No.
Ms. Johnson.
Yes.
Ms. Putney.
Yes.
Ms. Santiago.
Yes.
Mr. Stacy.
Obstain.
Ms. Terrello.
Yes.
Dr. Delucia.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Great. That brings us to the end of our meeting. Discussion concerning future agenda items can be emailed to both myself and the superintendent. And also, please do not forget to go over vision, mission, goals to be up for discussion and hopefully approval on September 9.
Michelle will be bringing a draft of the Alliance Grant to the board for approval at its next meeting.
Okay.
Are we keeping these?
We can collect those.
I will collect the collection.
Yeah, because they're redlined, you don't...
Yeah.
Okay. 8:28. Yeah, there you go.